Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call to order the City Council's special meeting this evening on Friday, March 31st. And if we could please first have a roll of the attendance.
Councilwoman Ferry.
Present.
Councilwoman Renzulli.
Here.
Councilwoman Jermaine.
Present.
Councilwoman Donnegan.
Present.
Councilwoman Campopiano.
Present.
Councilwoman Paploskas.
Present.
Councilwoman Riley.
Here.
Council Vice President Vargas.
Present.
Council President Moreno.
Present. And this evening, this meeting is being called in accordance with the Charter, Section 3.07, and all council members have been properly notified. This evening, we will hear from the mayor, who we welcome in our chambers this evening. Welcome Mayor Hopkins. And the mayor will have the privilege this evening pursuant to the Charter 6.03 to present his budget this evening. And mayor, you may have the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening to members of the City Council, my fellow residents and taxpayers of the city of Cranston. For the third time as mayor of this great city, I have had the duty under our city charter to present to the City Council my proposed municipal operating and capital budgets for the fiscal year that will begin on July 1st, 2023. I am pleased to report that Cranston's financial posture continues to improve from the challenging and significant impacts from the historic COVID-19 pandemic on our budget and our community. That progress is witnessed in the face of millions of dollars in lost state revenue and historic inflation pressures from a roller coaster of national economic uncertainty. With diligence and careful management of tax dollars and city spending, my message tonight is encouraging for our city. We have made great strides in our financial status, as I will outline this evening. There is still more to be done, but I am confident that we have Cranston going in an improved financial direction from where we started two years ago. I am committed to staying the course with your assistance, even in the face of reduced state aid in this uncertain national economy. Last year, we implemented significant steps to reduce the size of Cranston's government. I will continue to make the difficult decisions as necessary for our long-term financial health. The budget plan being unveiled tonight will continue to meet the fiscal needs of our city and allow us to deliver essential city services. We will continue our work to effectively meet the needs of our constituents. I propose a prudent and comprehensive financial plan for our city that is deserving of your support. I am committed to keeping Cranston on the right track in all that we do and to deliver necessary services at a reasonable price to all of our taxpayers. The most important job we have as a local government is to operate city departments efficiently and to offer all the basic services that people expect, from police and fire protection, trash collection, snow plowing, paving of roads, with clean parks and playgrounds for families to enjoy in their neighborhood. About 55% of this budget will also fund the Cranston schools that residents expect will meet all the learning needs of students from our early education children through secondary students in their high school years. While we have no direct say in their spending, our residents want blue ribbon schools that meet the challenges of a 21st century education. With this budget, Cranston taxpayers are also doing their part. The present year's total budget that took effect last July was, in round numbers, a $330 million budget. Tonight, I present a city budget approximately $5 million less, or a total of $325 million. Let me underscore that point. This budget is $5 million less than the current budget. Most of our neighboring communities cannot offer that same financial news. In Cranston, we are getting the job done for less money. Before outlining the specifics, I would like to summarize where we are in this budget year, the overall success and some challenges that we have faced in operating city government. With that backdrop, on a positive note, we ended the last fiscal year with approximately $442,000 in surplus added to our rainy day fund. Fitch Rating Agency's affirmed Cranston's AA+ rating on the city's outstanding general obligation bonds. In doing so, they recognized our strong fiscal management practices and the ability to lead through a period of budget challenges. While we still have one quarter of this fiscal year to go, our current year financial status is positive. I am advised that we expect to end this year with another respectable surplus. But good financial results just don't happen on their own. It requires good management, careful monitoring of spending, and a diligent collection of revenue to fund all local services and programs. While we have had a relatively calm winter and saved money on plowing and sanding, the biggest trigger to this year's savings were the steps initiated by my team in July of last year. A series of workforce reductions and other cost-cutting initiatives helped to reduce the size of our government. In total, our employee ranks were reduced by 24 individuals through a plan of job eliminations, retirements, involuntary resignations. And while those actions were difficult, they were the right choices for Cranston's long-term financial health. In some circles, there was criticism for those decisions, but I am pleased to report with our assistance, those former employees secured other jobs for all those who wanted new employment. The second component to our successful management this year was my order that we impose over $1 million in expenditure reductions, encouraged by Councilwoman Renzulli during last year's budget considerations. Those reductions were suggested but not adopted by the council. In total, between those cost-cutting measures and the workforce reductions, we realized approximately $2.2 million in savings in the last fiscal year. Beyond the current year budget progress, there is much to be encouraged around our city tonight. Even in times that challenge local commercial development with rising interest rates and increased costs of materials, I remain cautiously optimistic of future economic development success. Recent stories of major projects around Rhode Island hitting the pause button impacted by inflation and market conditions is concerning because any delays in construction slow the expansion of our commercial and industrial tax bases. Along Route 37, we watched the construction rising for Topgolf and look forward when we all can attend their grand opening in the fall. I am hopeful that the Coppiato Group will soon have positive developments to share publicly for the former training school property and the Citizens Bank Building. Next week, the Planning Commission will review the master plan for the redevelopment of the Cranston Print Works. The following month, the initial plans for the Knights Corner development on Cranston Street that we previewed last month will formally be advanced. Projects like the Legion Bowl redevelopment, the Comstock Industrial Warehouse project, and the approved plans for the closed medium-security prison will all help with the pressure on residential homeowners and taxpayers. Just last week, we read a great story of the planned Iron Stag Brewery on Royal Square, which will be another step forward for that revitalized carter. We all share in the excitement and renewed activity of the historic Park Theater under the vision and leadership of former colleague Ed Brady. Finally, on economic development news, we all anxiously await the completion of the Knightsville Park and the related public works improvements and improved streetscape. All this reflects a local government invested in improving our infrastructure, the appearances of our business corridors to encourage shopping, dining, and local traffic for these important neighborhood businesses. The budget being offered tonight for your review reaffirms my commitment to public safety in our police and fire ranks. We want to make sure items like the Flock License Plate Reader Program continues as an essential tool to crime fighting. I will join in opposition to those at the State House who are trying to detract from the ability of the police to do their job more effectively. I am committing the necessary resources to keep our streets safe in this police budget. With some congressional help, the recently received SAFER grant is assisting us to fully fund 12 new firefighters for the next three years. The additional personnel will help with our minimum manning requirements. With all that encouraging developments, we had to assemble a budget in a very challenging environment of less revenue, expanding costs, and financial obligations that must be met. I underscore my concerns for all taxpayers who, like their city government, are challenged with their own financial obligations and costs of living. This budget is a balancing test of my best judgment on how to fund local city and school services. For the next year's budget, we had to account for increased expenses and significant loss of revenue across the board. These include $1.3 million in lost state aid under the distressed community formula for a second year, a reduction of $975,000 in state pilot money as a result of them restating the value of the state buildings on the Howard complex, budgeting for a 10% increase in healthcare costs, $322,000 for increased costs of garbage pickup and tipping fees at the state landfill, $58,000 for increased rental of the fire hydrants from the city of Providence, $1.2 million to pay for the balance to complete the state law-mandated citywide property revaluation, over $775,000 for contracted employee obligations and step increases, a budgeted increase in fuel costs for the fleet of city vehicles of $147,000. You recall that last year, we had the fund at the strongest urging of the Audit General, $7 million for several years of health insurance deficiencies that my administration inherited. I am pleased we put that issue behind us. We are also funding at the required level all of our pension contributions and other post-employment benefits, or OPED payments. Our required police and fire pension contributions are increasing $446,000 next year. Next year's payments for our debt service for capital projects and interest on city bonds and notes will show an overall reduction. That is a result of the periodic cycle of projects on bonds being paid off. But please note, in this next fiscal year, debt service, we have scheduled bond payments of $1,545,000. I caution the council and the public that we will see a significant increase in the next few years for the cost of new schools being built in other school projects. These investments were approved by the voters in 2020 with the $147 million school bond issue. I have expressed to the school administration and committee members that while I support a new Gladstone School, the staggering increase in building costs because of inflation and costs of construction is concerning. Every day, we read of a different municipality reevaluating their plans for major school projects. As we all know, the mayor and council have no formal role in this design, construction, or actual plans for our schools beyond funding them. I had requests from several departments for some new positions. In the face of the overall budget challenges, I have not approved any requests for new personnel. More importantly, I have, in just about every case, maintained or reduced current year line items expenses without any justified increases. All department heads will be directed to manage their budgets while meeting my expected level of services to our constituents and to do so with the current staffing levels. Under this proposed budget, Cranston taxpayers will pay $98.5 million towards an overall school budget of approximately $178 million. That fundings include the additional $2.5 million I gave the schools in the last two years, now built into the city's required maintenance of effort. Last year, with the new teacher contract before the council for ratification, I initially had some concern about the overall cost. I was criticized, but ultimately lowered my comments upon assurances that the schools had the ability to fund the contracts without impairing student services or extracurricular activities. In the ensuing months, I have advised the school leadership that city budget challenges would limit my ability to extend another year of extra money as I had in my first two years. I remain confident that our school leaders can work with available resources to meet the needs of our students without affecting programs and services. Between increased state aid, local tax dollars, their elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund, and a reserve fund balance, they can keep our schools adequately funded. Taxpayers are committing great support to the schools in next year's capital budget. The budget I am proposing will provide over $40 million for the last phase of the New Garden City School and the Eden Park School. That will also include funding to launch the demolition and construction for Gladstone Elementary School. Earlier this week, I advanced the plans for the new Budlong Pool. With council approval of some oppa funds, we will get it formally designed and out to bid. The capital budget includes up to $4 million for the pool's construction and modernization next year. for the pool's construction and modernization next year. The capital budget also includes a series of projects for us to preserve our infrastructure and continue our citywide paving program. It also will allow us to proceed with Phase 2 of the Knightsville Redevelopment Plan. The Police Department had proposed using capital funds towards improvements at our police range. Unfortunately, when the Planning Commission weighed various priorities, they did not see the merits of allocating any funding for that project. I am committed to working with Colonel Winquist to explore other options for the surrounding neighborhood. As I laid out in the budget plan, I looked at all forms of revenue to help pay for these services. I have met with the governor to ask for help from the state's multimillion-dollar surplus as a fairness issue for the drain on Cranston services to the state's Howard Complex. I implore members of the General Assembly to use their considerable seniority and influence to help Cranston taxpayers with more direct aid to the city. We looked at possible grants as a source of funding before looking to the taxpayers. This budget will use $4.675 million of funds from APRA or the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. One of its primary purposes is relief to assist communities facing revenue loss, and we will use some of it for that purpose. On a positive note, last year, we used $12.4 million of APRA funds for taxpayer relief. Again, in this budget, I promised to use only $4.7 million. That is $7.8 million less than the prior year. We are certainly on the right track. We will retain the balance of available funds for identified community needs. The overall budget I am submitting tonight, as stated for the fiscal year 2024, is approximately $325 million. In order to balance this budget, it will include a small proposed tax increase to pay for the increased cost of our government obligations amidst reductions in state funding. We must acknowledge the increased cost of our governmental obligations. The spending plan is appropriate, but we will need to ask the taxpayers for some nominal additions, help in executing these services. Therefore, the budget present tonight, if adopted by you, will result in a nominal 1.94 property tax increase. I propose no other increases for sewer fees or any other fees. What does that mean to the taxpayers? For example, I will pay an additional $116 for my house in Garden City. A relative who lives in Knightsville will see an increase of $104 in taxes. My chief of staff, who lives in Alpina Estates, will pay an additional $163 in real estate taxes. My deputy chief of staff, who lives in Eden Park, will pay an additional $85. Before concluding, let me express my appreciation on behalf of all the residents for the dedicated service of our public employees. From our city and school employees to our police and firefighters, you help us every day to deliver the essential services that our tax dollars fund. At the outset tonight, I said the primary goal of this budget is to continue to protect our long-term financial well-being and keep Cranston affordable for all residents and families. We have met that test. I look forward to your favorable consideration, and as always, one Cranston, one hot beat. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Mayor Hopkins, for the budget address. Just this evening, there will be no votes taken. This evening, we will be, as a council, introducing new matters going forward, and I'd just like to mention those this evening. We will be hearing a resolution adopting the operating budget and salary schedule for the general fund, the sewer fund, the insurance fund, and the capital budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024, and adopting the capital improvement program for the four succeeding years. An ordinance making annual appropriation for the city of Cranston for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024, a resolution levying and ordering the assessment and collection of a tax on ratable real estate and tangible personal property pursuant to Charter Section 6.11, ordinance fixing the date when taxes are assessed, due and payable, and the date when unpaid taxes will carry a penalty. And all of these will be referred to Special Finance Committee meetings. Please refer to the city's calendar for those times and dates. The actual hearings will take place on Tuesday, April 4, Thursday, April 6, Monday, April 10, and Tuesday, April 11. Finally, Tuesday, April 18, with amendments to be heard on Thursday, April 20, and full budget adoption to be heard on April 27. And finally, if there are any mayoral vetoes, we reserve May 9 for the final adoption and overrides. At this time, I would like to hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.